Good afternoon. I'll call this meeting of the Fiscal Courts Contracts and Leases Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Gentry.
Here.
Squire Varner.
Here.
Squire Blackbird.
Judge Executive Kay.
Yes ma'am. The, we have a couple of things on the agenda to go through in Contracts and Leases Committee. We'll try to make it pretty quick. The first is the Woodford County Fair Board Association lease. It's a general discussion and review of the lease. I'd like to thank the Chair of the Fair Board, Mary Lou Watkins, for joining us. And we have other members of the Governing Board, I believe, with us as well. And the other item is the MWM contract renewal with Lucas Witt and his firm for EDA. And we'll go over those first. The, we'll go over the Fair Board lease first. And what we want to do is just make the court familiar, this court familiar with the updates that were done in the September 2022 amendments to that lease. So y'all have that before you. And we'll just go through and talk about its contents so that we can better understand the lease, the responsibilities of the court and the Fair Board, and any other of the provisions thereunder. So, on October 1st, 2022, we entered into a lease for a period of 10 years. That begins, again, on October 1, 2022, ends September 30, 2032. And one of the reasons, as the Chair knows, we amended the lease was to non-permanent tangible improvement for grant funding that was allowed for the Fair Board to pursue the grant funding. It says the court recognizes that for all the years beginning prior to this date, the Board had the express right and approval from the court to use the project for holding the Woodford County Fair and all related activities. The court and Board agree that the initial term of the lease automatically renews for a period of five years. Each five years unless either party shall notify the other within 60 days prior to the end of the initial term of 10 years. So it's a 10-year lease with a five-year renewal period. Again, the lease was changed in 2022 so that the Fair Board could pursue a capital construction grant which required a 20-year lease. That's why we amended that lease. And my understanding is the Board did not secure the grant, and so it reverted from a 20-year lease back to the 10-year lease that was, that was originally agreed upon. We have a nominal rental payment, of course. It's a essentially a gift of $1 consideration for each year for the lease term for the Board and the Woodford County Fairgrounds. And the property, the Board agrees to use the property only for the purpose of holding the annual Woodford County Fair and other like functions from which the Board may time to time approve whether the Board puts it on itself or other appropriate agencies such as Woodford County Extension, 4H programs, FFA programs, or other like programs. And the Board further agrees that all property use of said property shall be done in a proper and appropriate manner, considering and taking into all consideration all the other persons and agencies that use the county park property from time to time. And the Board further agrees that this lease is non-exclusive in nature. It shall, at the request of the court, listen to and seriously consider reasonable comments and requests from the court concerning the use of property. And it shall times cooperate with the court and its agencies in a matter concerning the use of the property as well as the use of the county property, the county park property, which is the surrounding property around the fairgrounds. So just a couple of things to note. The specific emphasis on Woodford County Extension, 4H, FFA, and other like programs, I would interpret that to also mean agriculture and farming-related programming as well. That the lease is non-exclusive. It doesn't give the Fair Board the exclusive right of the use of the fairgrounds, but that it is supposed to be a shared use. And that the court has the ability to discuss with the Fair Board anytime any requests arise or any matters arise concerning the use of the property. Moving on to the next section. Both parties recognize and acknowledge the Board shall have first priority to the lease premises during the immediate lead-up to the week of the aforementioned fair and the immediate follow-up thereafter after the fair closes. At all other times if non-fair matters have been scheduled, after consultation with the appropriate Board authorities, then such scheduling shall not be later unreasonably denied and shall be allowed to proceed. So essentially, that paragraph includes that the Fair Board would have the opportunity for first priority on the lease, specifically during the week before the fair and the week after the fair. At all the other times that the property should be scheduled for use, and again, that would include uses for community activities, specifically agriculture agency and county agency use. And again, that shall not be unreasonably denied and allowed to proceed. This is one of the important pieces that we want to look at. The parties further agree that the questions of maintenance, utilities, insurance, access, and subletting shall all be determined and settled between the court and the Board as they may from time to time agree. The reason that I point that specific portion out of the lease is I don't think there's any question that the county has undertaken the majority of maintenance, the vast majority of maintenance and maintenance costs associated with the fairgrounds. We've purchased storage units for the fairgrounds. The bleachers project was a total project cost to include ingame goods and services of over $275,000. The county provided $15,000 in lighting and installation. Our maintenance department replaced the lighting at Hupman Pavilion. We worked on the new pulling track announcer booth, which was roughly $3,000. We also went in and repaired and renovated the exhibit barn. We cleaned it out. We cleaned it up. We reworked the electrical. We painted the interior, including the floor, and we sealed it. And that was in excess of $3,000 worth of expense. We built bump outs for the concession stand. That cost us the county about $2,500. We replaced the pump and the ice machine for $25. We did an insulation project at Peyton Hall for about $7,500. We replaced the ceiling tiles for about $1,100. We've repaired the HVAC unit at Peyton Hall. We've rebuilt the Fair Board and county park restrooms. That was nearly $40,000 of expense to the county. We removed trees to prevent damage to the Hupman Pavilion and the concession stand, paved the rock road area from the top of the hill to the restrooms by the pulling track, and that is roughly $30,000 expense that the county paid for. We reworked the panels, electrical panels for the carnival use. We currently pay the utilities for the electric, the water, potable, and the sewer system and the pump maintenance. We did replace the sewer system pump, system pump on the fairgrounds. We're responsible for the general upkeep of the grounds and facilities and any other maintenance that's needed, other various projects that we've conducted over the past several years. And we provide county equipment, inmates, and other county resources and personnel to assist not only the Woodford County Fairgrounds, but specifically during the Woodford County Fair. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any sort of settled agreement between the court and the Board, but I'd just like it noted that the county in particular has made a large commitment, as I've stated, to take care of the maintenance, the utilities, the insurance for the Woodford County Fairgrounds. Final provision of the lease is by mutual agreement of the parties, this lease shall modify, cancel, revoke, supersede, and replace other leases prior to the 10-year lease entered into here too. And again, this was approved by the court on September. The original lease was, this lease superseded was the September 30, 2015 lease, and it was replaced again September 30, 2022. In addition to that, you have your map before you of the fairgrounds property. And as you can see, there's been significant investment by the county into the fairground property, assisting and working with the Fair Board on various projects related to the fairgrounds. Again, this is one of the responsibilities of the Fiscal Court. It's one that we've undertaken to a great degree in the last five-plus years as a way to both support the fair and the fairgrounds as a county asset. And so we wanted to make sure that the Fair Board lease was before the court, that you all understood our responsibility thereon. Director Rick Wade has undertaken a lot of the leadership in these projects. Him and his team have done a lot of work on that. If there's any questions about any of the maintenance items that have been done, I welcome you to ask those questions to Rick. But the goal today is to review that lease for discussion. And again, we also have the Fair Board Chair here for any questions. We also have the Vice Chair, Mr. Jesse Whitaker, has joined us. And if you have any questions for them, I welcome that. But I open up the floor for any, yes, Mr. County Attorney, sir. You're recognized.
I think it's important, and I know Ms. Watkins will know this, particularly for the newer court members to know, we're talking about the current lease. This would be, this is the, let me go back. The original lease that I recall was from September of 2006. That was going to be a 10-year lease. That lease was changed in, and all of these were at the Fair Board's request. We never got to the end of a lease term. In 2012, it was changed at the request of, the term was changed at the request of the Fair Board. That was supposed to be another 10-year lease. The next year, it was changed again. That was supposed to be a 10-year lease through September of '23. Two years later, in 2015, it was changed again, and that was supposed to be a 10-year lease ending in 2025. And then, Judge, the one you referenced under this court, your two terms, in September of '22, it was changed, again, at the Fair Board's request. So we have gone through 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 leases since the 2006 one, which was, and if we had stayed on that term, then the cycle of leases would have expired in 2026. With all the changes, and particularly because of the most recent change, the cycle is such now that it will not end until 2032. But I do want the court to be aware, whenever issues arose and the requests were made, the Fiscal Court made the changes that the Fair Board asked for.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Appreciate that listing of the former leases and terms. Does anybody else have any questions or discussion regarding the Fair Board lease as we've reviewed it? Yes, sir. Squire Varner.
Judge, just reading through here, the Fair Board does a great job putting the fair on, and they have, they've done great on keeping up the grounds. The only thing I see in the lease that maybe we could, we could secure or open up a little bit more, I know we got the agricultural community covered by the, by the lease, but now that we've added the bleachers and we have an opportunity to maybe community, Kiwanis Club or school have a band concert out there or something, I'd just like to have it where it would be folks could, could access it, you know, pretty easily. And maybe, do we run those, when we get requests, do we run those through Parks and Rec? And maybe, you know, the one entity, Parks and Rec, could, could give us, you know, the schedule and schedule those, those things. But I'd like to see that, where we could include and, and open that up so that the, the fair keeps their, their weeks prior and after. But in some way, we accommodate other folks in the community to, to come and use the park.
Yes. Thank you, Squire Varner, for that comment. I do believe that the Rich Pictor and Parks and Recreation schedules the Hupman Pavilion, the Red Barn, I believe, the Red Barn usage. I'm not sure if there are any other facilities that are scheduled for use by Parks and Rec that we're aware. But that's something that, that we could work with the Fair Board and discuss, either whether it would be, under the current lease, I think it would be, they would schedule with the Fair Board. But there's no, there's no express, you know, it kind of alludes to agriculture-related organizations and activities, but it doesn't necessarily say general community activities. I do think the, I know that the Farm Bureau uses the concession stand specifically for the rodeo, and that maybe the concession stand was rented to the school for a cross-country meet? So things like that.
Yes. And also, Judge, I know I had some calls, you know, to ask how to approach using the park. And then, you know, maybe having it where it's kind of centrally located, then we don't have to go through a lot of channels to get it rented or used. And, you know, and availability of the electric stuff, I know that'd be all in the lease and all in the agreement. But we need that, you know, where that's kind of simplified some.
And I think I can work with the Fair Board as a ex officio member of the Fair Board as Judge Executive. I think I can bring that to the Fair Board for, for their discussion. Other questions or comments from the Contracts and Leases Committee regarding the fair lease? Madam Chair, you're welcome to address the court or the committee if you have anything to share, or we can move on to our next contract.
Just one thing.
Do you mind to turn on the mic and, please?
Just one thing.
Sure.
In the last four days, we have decided that we're going to try to go for a grant this year and try to get a new building like we had tried in 2022, I think it was.
Yes.
And if, if that's the case, if we get this grant, that's going to require the 20-year lease. I don't know how that's going to affect what you're doing now, but I just wanted to share that with you. We just started working on the grant. It's due on the 1st of October. And hopefully, we can get it. But the big thing is the dollar figure.
Yes.
If we're looking at a building big enough to serve various organizations and various meetings and things like that, we need a building that is big enough to accommodate those meetings and things. So...
May I ask, what organization are you applying for? Is it through the Ag Development Board or?
Department of Agriculture with the fair shows and, I think it's shows and fairs. But I don't know how, I mean, we, this is, we're only half a step into this whole thing.
Sure.
But the money issue is, you know, the main thing right now.
Yes, Mr. County Attorney.
I do want to clarify one point, Ms. Varner. The original lease renew, or revision related to the grant that was then being applied for, is this the same grant or a different grant? Because that 20-year only kicked in if the grant that in 2022 was being applied for was approved. If it was not approved, this is a 10-year lease.
Correct.
And the court would have to, for the sixth time, look at possibly revising this for that. So I don't think it's a given that applying now for the grant would, if you get it, makes this a 20-year lease.
When we apply for the grant, we have to have a 20-year lease.
I understand that. We went through that in the past revisions. But my point is, when you said it would activate the 20-year lease, I'm not certain that it would, because the way this was drafted is it related to the grant currently being applied for, which was what was presented to the court as to why you needed it. So if you're applying now in 2024, that clearly isn't what you were applying for in 2022. And I don't think it would. And that might entail the court having to come back and take a look at the lease in its entirety all over again.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
I just wanted to share that before, you know, things got approved and, you know, whatever needs to take place.
Well, it's, this is convenient timing to review the lease, and you're looking at requesting additional review of the lease from the court. So we have it in front of us, and, you know, you're more than welcome to make any requests through the Board that you'd like.
Well, we're, like I say, we're going to try to go for it, and I don't know how successful we'll be. We never know.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
I just wanted to share that before, you know, things got approved and, you know, whatever needs to take place.
Well, it's, this is convenient timing to review the lease, and you're looking at requesting additional review of the lease from the court. So we have it in front of us, and, you know, you're more than welcome to make any requests through the Board that you'd like.
Well, we're, like I say, we're going to try to go for it, and I don't know how successful we'll be. We never know.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Any other questions or comments regarding the Woodford County Fair Board lease discussion? Yes, ma'am. You mind to come to the podium and say your name and turn on the mic, please?
Can you hear me?
Right there? Okay.
Now we can.
Okay. My quick question is, you guys had listed everything that you guys have done. What has the Fair Board, you know, monies, what have they put up for improvement to the fairgrounds? You know, like the exhibit barn and the, the things that have been done? What do they have, what have they contributed to that? I guess that's my question.
I can say that whether, whether it's been, the, the exact part of the lease which you're talking about discusses that maintenance specifically would be settled between the court and the Board. My understanding is, is that the court, at least since my time as judge, has taken over the maintenance completely of the, the county fairgrounds.
As far as upgrades or that kind of thing, that got added over, you know, those years?
Yes. Director Wade may know, may know more, but my understanding is, is that we've, we as the Fiscal Court have taken over that full responsibility.
Is the Fair Board responsible for any of that, as far as upgrades?
You mind to turn back on your mic there? Yeah. The other folks can't hear you from that.
Oh, I'm sorry. As far as the, you know, not necessarily maintenance or that kind of thing, but improvement to make it more community-friendly, I guess is what I'm looking for, rather than just be a fair and just that kind of thing. Are they responsible for any of that as far as upgrade?
I mean, I think that ultimately, the, the question you're asking about whether or not it's their responsibility is one that, according to the lease, would have to be determined between the court and the Board. And I would defer to the Fair Board Chair and Vice Chair to explain any of the improvements that they have made. But as far as I know, and I work closely with Director Wade and our Maintenance and Facilities Committee, the Fiscal Court has undertaken the vast majority of all maintenance and utilities and other projects on the fairgrounds.
Okay.
I didn't know they were responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Squire Varner, sir?
Yes, sir. Judge, thank you. Just, I know through my experience on Ag Development, if we go for grants and it is, like through Ag Development, their requirement is that the, I know that the government entity guarantees that the Fair Board would have a spot to have a fair.
Yes.
For that length of time. It doesn't necessarily mean anything other than that, that we are guaranteed that, that that fair would be held there. And I don't know what the, the next grant will be, but I don't think would be any problem maybe to, to look at that part of it as we go through, you know, the length of time, if the grant, just for, you know, guaranteeing the entity that's putting up the money, that we, we do commit that we're going to have a fair on those grounds for those years.
Absolutely. And yeah, I think just to make it clear, to your point, the county is absolutely committed to the fairgrounds being the home of the Woodford County Fair and the Board and their activities. All right. Other questions or comments related to the Fair Board lease? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. The MWM contract renewal. You all will see, you have before us the consulting agreement made between MWM Consulting. And this is an agreement between the county, the city, and the city of Midway, Versailles in Midway. A brief historical review is that we, John Soper was the consultant for the EDA. And upon his retirement, we hired MWM. It was under a different name at that time, and this is Lucas Witt's Consulting Company. They've done a tremendous job for us. I'd like to note a few changes that have been discussed specifically by the EDA and requested by the, the EDA. But one of the things that MWM provides is different types of services other than their EDA consulting, which we hire them for. That stakeholder engagement, identification and development... That stakeholder engagement, identification and development of strategies to market existing industrial properties and develop future properties, existing industrial stewardship, project or client management, and ongoing communication with local, regional, and state entities like the Cabinet for Economic Development, et cetera. What, the biggest change, so you'll note that the overall amount of the contract does not change for the cities of counties. I do, it might have a cost of living increase in there, but the main thing is that they would offer a variety of other services listed on Exhibit A, which I've just stated, that each individual jurisdiction, the city of Midway, Versailles, and the county could engage MWM at, for these type of services exclusive of the other jurisdictions. So they could do an individual work for the city of Midway or of Versailles based on that Exhibit A. Those are the main, the main changes in this agreement, but overall, the agreement is essentially the same. I find it to be in good order and a reasonable and valuable agreement for the county. Our economic development has been, wages and jobs in Woodford County are higher than they have ever been, and I know that MWM has helped us in achieving more jobs and higher wages for those jobs in Woodford County over their time as our consultant. I'll open up the floor for any questions regarding this independent contract agreement with MWM Consulting. Yes, Squire Varner, you're recognized.
Just, I have worked with Lucas some on some issues in my district, and he's been very, very open and very accessible and very knowledgeable and been a good help in some of those problems. We hadn't got to the, to the point we want to be at, but we've made some big strides in that. So he has done, done a good job in helping me in my district through this and some problems.
Thank you for sharing that, Squire Varner. I really think that they offer the top-tier level of consulting and services. They're experts on economic development, and, you know, they have some pretty big projects under their belt that they work with the EDA on and also helped us retain and assist other businesses that are already existing in Woodford County, which is oftentimes the most important part of economic development, is keeping the businesses that we have, making sure that we're servicing and addressing their needs as it relates to the government responsibility of economic development. Are there any further questions or comments? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to recommend the consulting agreement be approved by the full fiscal court.
Sole moved.
Motion by Squire Varner, second by Squire Blackford. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Anybody have anything else to come before the Contracts and Leases Committee? Seeing none, I appreciate our work thereon, and we will adjourn the Contracts and Leases Committee. We will reconvene in a special meeting for the purposes of the committee of the whole in a few moments. We are adjourned. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court Committee of the Whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor.
Here.
Squire Dentry.
Here.
Squire Varner.
Here.
Squire Corral.
Here.
Squire Downey.
Here.
Squire Blackford.
Russell.
Squire Gill.
Here.
We have two important items, specifically our tax rates discussion. We have the chief of the Woodford County Fire District here with us. We also have the Hunter Town Road safety discussion, but I am aware that we have the neighbors of the Milliner-Tyrone Pike area who are here. Are you all here to address the court in a matter of public comment? Anybody wishing to speak to the court in public comment? If so, if so, let me go ahead and request a motion from the fiscal court to allow public comment out of order on the special meeting agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Dentry, second by Squire Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Public comment is open for anybody who wishes to address the court and/or the public. Mr. Hooton, sir?
Yeah, Chris Hooton.
Excuse me.
That's okay. So yeah, I think all of us would just like to have an update on where the matter stands with the court. I know there's been a lot of review and discussion about what should or shouldn't happen with the deed issue or the nuisance issue. So I think we would all appreciate any kind of update from the court on where things stand or what the next steps are. Thank you.
Other members of the neighbors would like to speak, address the court on any issues related to the, any issue that's before the court, any matter of public opinion? Mr. Rice, sir?
I would, Judge.
Yes, sir.
No tourism and invasion of privacy, student things. There are several people that live down that track. Every year, all of us pay all this property tax. We pay it for the police, we pay it for the fire department, we may even pay some of y'all's salary. I don't care, don't know, don't care. The biggest thing we pay for is the privilege of living in our homes in peace with privacy, and we no longer have that at all. And it looks like to me, all the money that we pay every year, and according to the Woodford Sun, that's fixing to go up, and we pay that to the county. I would think the county could solve this problem a lot quicker for us rather than continue on because of something from out of state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I'll open up the floor for additional public comment. Anybody wishing to seek the court, seek to address the court and/or the public?
Aye. Can I hand these out real quick?
Sure. This is, you're, just to make sure, Ms. Hoover, if you don't mind to just state your name for the record and let folks know what you're passing out to the court?
So my name is Megan Hoover, and I am with Lanes View Neighborhood Association, and I'm handing you all some information that I'm going to talk about regarding the nuisance ordinance and some pictures. They're both the same sets, but one for each side. They start from 2020 to present day, so we're here to talk about, or at least me. So like I said, my name is Megan Hoover. I'm a resident and the current HOA president, and I'm here on behalf of the Lanes View Neighborhood to bring attention to the lack of enforcement that is occurring regarding the county ordinance entitled the nuisance ordinance of residential areas outside of the city limits of Versailles and Midway. To give you just a little bit of background knowledge, prior to November of 2017, Woodford County subdivisions did not have representation within the county ordinances, so individual HOAs were responsible for dealing with the complaints related to neglected properties and structures, while unfortunately, the residents of those structures didn't face any penalties. Surrounding homeowners suffered loss in property, and the health-related concerns increased with them. On April 24, 2017, Mike Adams, the former Lanes View Neighborhood Association president, wrote to the late Judge Coyle regarding an article in the Woodford Sun about the issue, and he requested that a committee be created. It was. Marion Gill led that, along with Mike Adams and several other officials. There's emails included that they went back and forth, and then seven months later, he signed in, the ordinances into effect. Since then, Lanes View Neighborhood, HOA, has repeatedly called on the county health department and the police, which are listed in the ordinances, as those individuals that we need to contact regarding the code enforcement violations, to no avail. Specifically, we're talking about property 408 on Winterberry Court. Over the last 12 years, that homeowner has left the home and moved to another county. The yards become a jungle, plants are now growing in the home, animals have taken over. As you'll see from the pictures, there's holes in the home, there are holes in the siding, windows are falling out, there's wasp nests. There's currently been, to date, four floods in the home, so the power has had to be turned off to the home because there's no fire hazard if they were to try to turn it on. And now it's become a health violation. Recently, Code Enforcement Officer Gordy Shaw, who's with the city, came out, and he found numerous code violations. He sent those on to Magistrate Varner, myself, and Assistant Chief Young. Unfortunately, those in charge of overseeing for the county did not agree with him. But we copied, based on the emails, the city ordinances were copied over for the county so that in the event they could ever be enforced, it would be across the board, both city and Lanes View Neighborhood would like to know what the county plans to do about this home. Specifically, it's bringing down property values in our neighborhood, it's burdening the neighbors because they're having to try to maintain it. I've asked them to stop, and it's causing health issues for residents. We're also asking that you all hold those responsible in overseeing these ordinance with actually doing their jobs, not asking the HOAs to change their bylaws. That was the point in this being created. I appreciate your time and attention on this matter, and hopefully, we can come to a solution.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. This comment's going to apply to both issues. This special meeting is about tax rates and the Hunter Town Road four-way stop discussion, safety discussion, and therefore, it's not a time for the fiscal court to take up and address these issues. We'll take under the advisement of the comments made, but specifically in this special meeting, we can only receive public comment. It's not a time for the fiscal court to respond, but we will respond to both of your issues at some point in some sort of form or fashion.
May I speak?
If you approach the podium and say your name and apologize to Megan for giving her that presidency of the homeowners association.
Actually, I was going to do that, actually. I looked her with a little bit of quagmire when I stepped back, but she's doing a wonderful job, so.
She really is.
And I was, like I said, I was on that committee when we did these ordinances. And when I was president, we did have a good relationship with the city police in dealing with a lot of the ordinances issues. The history of this, it goes back to some time before I was even president. And when you mentioned, that's why I'm standing up here as someone who deals with HOAs on a regular basis. We do not have power, real power in HOA to do much of anything. We have to do civil courts, and that costs a lot of money, a lot of time, and that's why we look toward the courts to help us in this matter. When I went to Bear back in the day and aggravated him to death, is, he said, yes, it is responsibility of the county to help with the maintenance of a subdivision. At that time, we didn't have anything as such because everything- At that time, we didn't have anything as such because everything was treated outside the county as a farm. We didn't have any residential ordinances that really addressed all this. And it was wonderful, it was wonderful he did that to bring us in line, because it goes back to, one, is our property value, which is important to you all, of course. And secondly, it's unfortunate we have to have rules in place to make people good neighbors. But without enforcing those rules, they'll still be bad neighbors and will affect all of us, all of us in this community. As Judge Kay know how I feel about community and this, and this having my own little nonprofit, but it's important that we all work together to solve this. I just want to put that out there. There's some history to this, and I think what's come out of it, it's been wonderful because I know Squire Gill has had a sycamore, he dealt with that. I know C.L. had a home that they dealt with out at Millville. So this works, but we just got to get back to enforcing. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Hoover, anything additional? Thank you. I'd open up the floor for any public comment. Anybody wishing to address the public and/or the court? Going once, and we have a very long agenda in the Fiscal Court, so, yes, sir, you're welcome.
Dale Dragomir. And Judge, I appreciate your concerns about your meeting for tonight. When would you address our comments, our concerns?
We can, we can discuss that offline now. It's the time for public comment. I'm not being a stickler on these rules, but I'll just take the opportunity to express this. This is a special meeting. It's a special meeting called for the Committee of the Whole to take up two important purposes. We also have a public meeting on the tax hearing at 5:00. If I were to bring items to a special meeting, it would not be transparent. It would not give the public opportunity to respond because we would amend the agenda within the special meeting. In the meeting of the Fiscal Court, we may have the opportunity to take that up, but I will have to discuss that with the county attorney.
So I respect everything you've had to say, understand everything you've had to say here. I'm just wondering when you would address our concerns? I know it's not today, I'm not looking for today, I'm looking for a date.
And I will have a response for you during the Fiscal Court meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Going twice, seeking anybody wishing to seek to address the public or the court? Going a third time, third and final time, anybody wishing to address the court on any matter? Seeing none, we will move on to the agenda of the special meeting of the Committee of the Whole for the Woodford County Fiscal Court. And the first item are our tax rates. And again, we'll have a public hearing here in about 10 minutes, so I'd like, if I could, Chief, if I could call you up to talk about the fire district's tax rate and the decisions made on that? The floor is yours, sir.
The Woodford County Fire Board, our tax rate was .063, and they voted on to take it to .073 where we were at. An estimated increase would be a little bit over $300,000 on our taxes. The fire board in the last six years have not took any kind of, they didn't take the compensation rate, didn't raise taxes or anything in the last six years. Since 2017, we built two new fire stations right at $2 million invested in that. July of last year, the fire department, the board, was good enough to me to allow me to go 2448 on coverage for Woodford County. That's not all stations, that's here at Station 1 that covers, but I have a crew there that as soon as alarm drops, the trucks are rolling versus having to wait on volunteers to come in. That's a big chunk of money right there. In the future, I need to add a third person to that crew on each shift, there's three people to be hired. Our health insurance went up this year. We ordered a new fire truck, new engine, in February of this year. It's $542,000 to replace one engine. I had a tanker go down about eight months ago. It's a 1977, I think it is, and it took me over six months to get a pump to put back in it. Some of our equipment is getting age on it, and we're having to start the replacement. I think as a fire board, they all spend taxpayer dollars very well and conservative of what we're purchasing. We'll say August the 3rd, we had a open meeting for our tax rate. We had three individuals show up, and the only thing they wanted to know is, were we taking enough, were we raising the tax money enough to cover what we were wanting to do? We had nobody at the meeting to oppose our tax rate. I've had no one call, no one ask, nobody's called the station or any of the magisters that I know, I mean, the fire board members that I know of, to question any of the tax rate that we were doing. It was advertised in the Woodford Sun for two weeks for the open meeting, so I'll answer any questions if I can.
Thank you, Chief. As the Fiscal Court knows, we have to approve the tax rates of special government entities. We wanted the opportunity for the court to review that. Again, we're about seven minutes from our public hearing on our own tax rate, so we'll probably have to move some of this discussion to the full Fiscal Court meeting, Chief. But I welcome the opportunity for anybody to ask any questions or discuss the Woodford County Fire Protection District's tax rate. Squire Gentry, sir?
Yeah, I feel like, you know, it's a pretty good jump, $300,000. I think the Woodford County citizens are hurting enough without raising their taxes. That's just how I feel on it. I think we have, as a court, have plenty of money, and if they needed help, that we could probably help them, and without raising any taxes. So that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Squire Gentry. Squire Dawson, you're recognized, sir?
Thank you. From the, Chief, from the budget that I was looking at on the projections, and currently we have over 1.1 million in reserve, is that correct, for carrying over for the, yeah? And that with the, as our property valuations have continued to increase, your, you know, anticipated revenues at the same rate would increase, or, you know, your expenses would be, if you did not increase the, make the jump to the 7.3, or .73, rather, would you still be able to cover the anticipated cost for this year?
It'd be very close, I think. I don't have anything in front of me, but it'd be very close where we're at. But I still had to pay for the truck when it gets here, and then we have two mortgages that we pay each month on that too, so.
Judge, another. Squire Downey, you're recognized, and then Mr. County Attorney, you're next.
Did we have any other taxing districts increase their, increase their rate this last fiscal year?
Not last fiscal year. In this current fiscal year, not all the tax rates are here in front of the court yet, but we do have to approve, again, all the special government tax entities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Yes, Judge. Chief question, please. The, it's obvious from the articles in the Woodford Sun, what, with the reassessments going on, it's going to be a two-year cycle. People are going to see a massive increase. I don't think they realize that. When you all did your projections as to what the tax rate will generate, how did you take into account what the new property values will be, how much they will increase, or was that done?
From my understanding, our attorney had figured that in, and that's at the 300, that's included in that 300 mark with our tax, with raising our tax. From my understanding, that was, that was total of everything.
You don't know how they increased what the total valuation of property would be?
Our attorney had a spreadsheet that he had to calculate all the numbers off that come from John Cole.
PVA?
PVA, yes.
Okay. And that will be...
We have that, we have that document.
Yeah. And that will be a two-year cycle, because there'll be so many reassessments this year and then reassessments next year. And I don't know that that's been clear to everyone, this is going to be a two-year cycle. Thank you, though, that's what, that's what my question was.
And so, Chief, we're three minutes from the public hearing on our own tax rate. If you wouldn't mind, we'll take this back up in Fiscal Court.
Okay.
We can probably do that during committees, which is towards the beginning of the meeting for you.
Okay.
But I appreciate you being here, and thanks for coming up, and we'll continue this discussion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll take a short recess of about two and a half minutes before we reconvene in a public hearing on the 2024 Fiscal Court Tax Rates. And I'd like to note, we're going to take a recess from the special meeting, and we'll actually go into the public hearing while we're in recess, so that that is actually still going on, so we can call it back to order if we have any additional time prior to our Fiscal Court meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call this meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court to order. This is the meeting for the notice of the public hearing for the 2024 proposed tax rate for the Woodford County Fiscal Court. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor.
Here.
Squire Gentry.
Here.
Squire Warner.
Here.
Squire Corral.
Here.
Here.
Squire Blackford.
Here.
Squire Gill.
Here.
Squire Brown.
The Woodford County Fiscal Court is holding a public hearing today, August 13th, 2024, on or about 5:00 p.m. in the second floor courtroom of the Woodford County Courthouse as advertised and noticed to the public, specifically for the purpose of obtaining comments from the public regarding the proposed tax rate. The tax rate levied last year for the Fiscal Court was 6.60 and produced revenues in the amount of $1,891,100. This year's proposed compensating rate is 6.10 and will produce revenues in the amount The Woodford County Fiscal Court proposes to lower the current tax rate to 6.30, which will produce a total estimated revenue in the amount of $1,994,626 in revenues. Again, the proposal of the Woodford County Fiscal Court is to lower the current tax rate from 6.6 to 6.3. One thing that I would clarify is that in discussing tax rates, they are often referred to as .66, or .63, or in the case of the fire district, .73, or .63. Either way, depending on how you're addressing the decimal point, the tax rate levied last year was 6.6. The proposal is to lower the current tax rate to 6.30. Revenue expected from personal property is estimated to be $297,380. Revenue expected, proposed for the motor vehicle tax rate is $297,102. The revenue from watercraft is $7,883. Revenue received in excess of last year revenue will be used specifically for county government operations. The statutes, the relevant statutes in the Kentucky General Assembly requires the Woodford County Fiscal Court to publish notice of this information and to conduct this public hearing to seek input from taxpayers on the 2024 proposed tax rate. Again, the tax rate is proposed to be lowered from 6.60 to 6.30. This notice was published in the Woodford Sun as required. Persons interested in commenting on our... Persons interested in commenting on our proposed lowering of taxes were encouraged to do so by 4:30 PM today, August 13th, 2024. Written comments can be sent to the fiscal court. Attention to myself, Judge Executive James Kay, in the courthouse, 103 South Main Street, Versailles, Kentucky 40383, or email to our info account, info@woodfordcountyky.gov. All of this information and this notice have been on our website. I would open up now the opportunity for any member of the public to comment on our tax rate and the proposal to lower the tax rate from 6.60 to 6.63. The floor is open for any member of the public to make a public comment regarding the 2024 fiscal court proposed tax rate. The floor is now open.
Pursuant, since I'm here, I guess I'll ask. So even though you are lowering the property tax rate, which we can all appreciate, as Mr. Downey mentioned, property values have increased significantly, and even though you're lowering the rate, you're bringing in what looks to be over $100,000 in additional revenue. Could maybe the court speak to what that additional revenue will cover, or if it's even necessary, and could you reduce the rate even lower to match last year's revenue if additional funds aren't needed for the county? Thank you.
Thank you. I know that this will come as no surprise, but this purpose of the public hearing is specifically for public input. It is not for discussion of the court. However, on our fiscal court agenda, specifically in new business, we have the proposed reading of ordinance 2024-06, general taxation, and that will be discussed at that time. We appreciate your comment on, in public comment. Thank you, sir. I'd open up the floor for additional public comments, additional public comments regarding the proposed 2024 Woodford County Fiscal Court tax rate. The first call for the floor to be open for any public comment will extend for another two minutes, and then there will be a second call for any public comment. Any member of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing, make a comment on the Woodford County Fiscal Court's 2024 proposed tax rate, you are welcome to address the court.
I think you might be able to answer for me.
Yes, sir.
What does personal property tax cover?
We can address that in the agenda item on the meeting. But really, this time is, I appreciate the question. I hope you understand why I can't directly address questions, but we can address them in the fiscal court meeting.
It's just hard to get an answer right now.
Mr. Dragomir, I really appreciate that, but let me, because it's important. This fiscal court has gone to great lengths to allow people to comment and be accessible, and anyone at any time can come in here and say their piece and express their opinions to us as their elected representatives. Roberts Rules of Order and the way that we structure our meetings allows public comment to be one direction to us. Our job is to listen. These are the requirements of the rules. I know it's frustrating when we don't then issue an immediate response, although in some cases, when it's procedural things, we kind of discuss those. But the fiscal court must then debate issues that come before the court upon the input and guidance and wisdom of the public. We can have a back and forth between members of the public in the court, but it would violate the rules, specifically the rules of Roberts Rules of Order. But it's important to note that, to my knowledge, we are the only public government body in this community that allows this level of public comment, and I understand that you also want responses in return, but most places would not allow and afford this opportunity. And so we do, and I apologize that under the rules, we're not permitted to then respond to direct questions of the court. But I would make this very, very important note. Each one of these members who you have elected to serve as your representative is always open and available to email, to meet, to do a phone call, as am I. And these questions can always be asked outside of the realm of the fiscal court and not take up the time of the public comment or the meeting agenda, where we welcome the opportunity to meet with you and discuss that. And I could step outside after this meeting and answer your question in quick succession, but under the rules, which I honor and abide by as the judge who's responsible for enforcing the rules of the court, simply just can't answer questions as I've stated before. And I apologize that that seems unsatisfactory, but that is the basis of our rules. Other folks have questions, excuse me, public comment related to the 2024 proposed tax rate? Going a second time? Going a second time?
I don't think doing it from here. Lily Cox, I'm just trying to, as I sit here and look at this, figure out if under new business, E, independent contract agreement for the food pantry, would that tax increase help them? Would that be something that would be helpful to whatever happens there? Which I know that's bringing up new, but I just...
I really appreciate your question, Mrs. Cox.
Sorry.
A question that you will get answered during our regular meeting of the fiscal court agenda. At this time, we are accepting public hearing and a public comments regarding the 2024 proposed tax rate. And let me say, you're welcome to ask questions. We just can't answer them at this point in time. That's a rule. It's not, I'm not just making it up. So, thank you, Ms. Cox. Other questions, questions are welcome. Other questions or comments regarding the tax rate. We've gone once, we've gone twice. This is the third and final call for anybody who wishes to address the fiscal court and/or the public regarding the 2024 proposed tax rate for the Woodford County Fiscal Court, taking the last year's tax rate, 6.6, and lowering it to 6.3. A third and final call for public comment has closed. One final opportunity. Seeing none, seeing no other final comment, let the record reflect that Woodford County Fiscal Court held their public hearing as required by statute and by law, and that this item will be taken up in our regular meeting in the agenda of new business forthcoming. Seeing nothing else to become before this special meeting for the purpose of a public hearing, seeing no other item or public comment to come before us, this matter is concluded. We are adjourned. As I mentioned, we remain in recess regarding the special meeting for the Committee of the Whole to discuss tax rates and the Hunter Town Road safety discussion. I will call us out of recess and back into order in that special meeting for the Committee of the Whole. As we concluded, we were discussing the tax rate for the Woodford County Fire District. Because tax rates is on the agenda, Mr. County Attorney, do you want to explain personal property to Mr. Dragomir?
We're now back in.
Yes, we are in, we are in the special meeting with tax rates on the agenda.
There are different groupings of taxes, your real estate, personal property, and a lot of this is inventory, which won't relate to everyone because not everyone has a business and has inventory and so forth, but it's one pool of money. For everything that you're taxed on, it's one pool that goes into the general fund, obviously the greatest of which is the ad verorum, the real property tax, and that will be even greater in light of the reassessments. So they're just different components of taxation that all go into the general fund to be utilized for county expenses, just as they have income, they have the related expenses. Having said that, the property taxes, and more particularly the real property taxes, are not even what composes the greatest revenue. I think people still think that property, or real property, it's easy to lapse into real property and property, that real property taxes comprise the greatest component of general fund monies. They don't, they used to way back in the day, but now it's net profit taxes, license fees, all of that. But it's all general fund money for which essential services are provided. And could I begin to tell you how much that is? No. But, but again, when you look at a budget, you know, we just went through the budget cycle, and you see how much of our budget is based on the money that is received from real property taxes versus what is received from net profit fees and license fees and all of that, the taxes we all pay for working in the city, working in the county, that's where we get our revenue. That's where the fiscal court generates its revenue and thereby able to provide the essential services that it provides. But they have to set separate rates for the real property taxes, and I would know, Judge, since we're talking about that, and this is a proposed, you addressed, could they even lower it more? Correct me if I'm wrong, fiscal court actually lowered it last year.
It was the year before.
The year before, two years ago. So this is a second reduction. I don't know that any other taxing district has done that. But, and I think your question is something, maybe it's 100,000 more or something, and would that be, again, you heard previously about money that goes into reserves and so forth. The budget speaks for what they had planned. The budget they approved just a month, a couple of months back shows what they intended to spend their money for. So I don't know that you're going to be able to get a particular answer, even when we go into regular meeting, as to what is that extra 100,000 designed to address. I mean, I don't want to speak for you and the court when we get to that point, Judge, but y'all are anxious for answers, and I don't know if you want to wait another 20, 30 minutes for that, but that's the point there. So, but I will credit the fiscal court for, I don't know what all the other districts are doing. I think they're keeping it the same. I will credit Judge Kay and Squire Carl, who are on the health board, and we had a meeting last week, and even though the court hasn't formally received it, they are not increasing their taxes, they will remain the same. And as a matter of fact, they've never, since its inception, increased their tax rate. So, one last point, when you hear these numbers like you're hearing 6.3 or 7.3, make sure you understand what that is and how that hits your wallet. How does that affect everyone individually? That is 6.3 cents per every $100 of the assessed value of your real property. So if you want to do the math on that, how much is your county tax? How much is your health district tax, your fire district tax? That's how you do that. Those figures, it's not, it's not a percentage per se, it is per 100, cents per $100 of assessed value of your real properties.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. And Mr. Dragomir, the tangible personal property is physical property, usually movable, that has a value and utility in and of itself. Examples, trade tools, fixtures, office equipment, and inventory. Our PVA, John Paul Coyle, would be the best in explaining exactly what that is. My understanding is the legislature changed some of the tangible personal property tax items. I can't speak to that exactly what they did, but our PVA might be able to better, better explain that to you. Specifically excluded from that would be household, personal goods in a home, crops grown in the year where the assessment is made, and other tangible personal property exempted under the Kentucky Constitution. So that is the tangible personal property tax that you ask. Mr. Hooton, the county put together our budget between January and July of this year. We anticipated the revenues we would receive up to essentially include basically what we're preparing to lower the tax rate to, and that's the amount of revenue we essentially have earmarked to run government. And so our treasurer has worked hard on that, our finance, budget and finance committee, that's essentially what we've set aside in order to run government, and so we can lower the rate to meet that level, and we will not get any other budget of receipts above that. So that's the justification for it in brief, but we could have a longer discussion during the tax rate to further satisfy your question if necessary. Finally, to you, Mrs. Cox. The general government expense of Woodford County agreed to fund, partially with the city of Versailles, $75,000 for the salary and benefits of the executive director of the Woodford County Food Pantry. And so we budgeted in our budget, using the amount that we expect to receive from property taxes, even lowering them by three points, we expect to receive enough to adequately fund that operational expense and others. So yes, in a way, in a $51 million budget, the $75,000 split between the food pantry and the fiscal court is a small but extremely important operation of our government.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. We have about six minutes to continue to discuss the tax rates. Again, as I mentioned, they, we have an agenda item which we will discuss herein, and we will begin to do that. But right now, the fire protection district tax rate is before us. As the county attorney mentioned, my understanding is that the library does not intend to raise their rate. The Woodford County Library Board of Trustees, the Board of Health voted to keep their rate the same, which is the lowest statutory rate that they can hold in the state, which is 2%. They cannot go lower, and they have been the lowest since the inception of the Woodford Public Health taxing district. As to other taxing districts, Squire Downey, we have not yet received those, but we do not anticipate any other taxing district to recommend an increase, although they have the ability to do so in their formal actions of their legislative bodies. So I'd open up the floor for additional discussion on any of the tax rates, specifically the Woodford County Fire District tax rate.
Once again, with the property assessments going up the way they are, it is very hard for me to vote for a tax increase. I'm pretty sure all the other citizens probably don't want to increase their taxes either. So I just, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Squire Gentry. Let me amend my comment to one specific taxing district that I'm not aware of what they're, they have done, that is the school board. I'm not aware of their final action on taxing districts. Other comments, questions regarding the tax rate? Sbarth Brown, sir?
Well, if we don't let them do it, can they still operate? And will it be, will they be able to meet the budget? Because the people they're going to have to hire, and we need those to be on, to be able to do that, because we used to be, we didn't have that. And so it's really helped us, them, what they're doing, and the things they got to buy. So do we need to talk to them again to be sure?
Yes, sir.
That you can make it without it, instead of just saying, no, you can't have it? Because I don't think they would ask for it if they didn't need it.
Yes, sir.